These days, current events unfold on a dozen channels. Headlines all seem to be shouting. And good news can be as scarce as a moment to relax. So let's turn down the noise this summer. Unplug just a little bit. And head to a shelter from the storms of life. The historic port city of Alpena. Located on the sunrise shore of Michigan. Only a few hours drive, but miles away from the way to the world. Nestled between a vast forest and an endless clear blue bay. Where the wonders of nature are as welcoming as the local hospitality. We can explore more than 200 shipwrecks in the largest freshwater sanctuary anywhere. Count the stairs to the top of a lighthouse. Or the mass that jut into the harbor sky at moonrise. Let's take a trip to the friendly picturesque city of Alpena. A haven from the world. That's pure Michigan. Your trip begins at Michigan.org.
For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the municipal council meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the city of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening, welcome to Alpena City Council Meeting, November 17th, 2014.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Nowak?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagora?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes. Regular session of November 3rd, 2014. Any modifications to the agenda? Citizens appearing before council on agenda, non-agenda items are allowed five minutes to address their concerns. This is the only time during a council meeting that you're allowed to address council with the exception of a public hearing on the proposed Brownfield plan. Home side of that.
Don't see a whole lot of participation.
Okay, must be something going on. Tonight, on the consent agenda, only one item. A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $978,675.54.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Nowak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
No announcements, no proclamations. We have a public hearing this evening. Proposed Brownfield plan for the Holiday Inn Express. I'll open the public hearing and a report from the city manager.
Okay. The development of the new Holiday Inn Express Hotel on the vacant Riverfront property located at the corner of River and Third. In the heart of our downtown faces a number of development issues unique to the site. These include environmental contamination on the site, the need for deep foundation pilings due to poor quality and instability of the existing soils. Much of it fill above the natural bedrock. And the need to reconfigure both Third Avenue and Carter Street leading to the site. Together, these add approximately $1.1 million to the overall cost of the project. The city's authority for Brownfield redevelopment is a mechanism that can assist in leveling the playing field relative to costs between Brownfield and Greenfield sites. To that end, the AABR, which is the Alpena Authority for Brownfield Redevelopment, staff and representatives of Alpena Lodging LLC for the Holiday Inn Express, work together to develop a plan by which the Brownfield Redevelopment Finance Act, PA 381 of 1996, could assist in reimbursing the company and the city for the added private and public costs. The first task was to have the site at 225 River Street designated a Brownfield. And I'm gonna steal some of your thunder mac, because I know this is a slide from the meeting of the Brownfield Authority, but there are four possible avenues available to reach this end. The site can be determined a facility, that is, has contamination above residential limits. The site is declared functionally obsolete. The site is declared blighted. Or it has historic designation. Utilizing the city's previous MDEQ site assessment and EPA Brownfield grants, both Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmental assessments were conducted on the property. As a result of these assessments, it was determined the site is contaminated and therefore qualifies as a Brownfield. Additional assessment activities were also conducted by Alpena Lodging's environmental consultant, Otwell Mulvey. The plan prepared by Otwell Mulvey utilizes a 15-year tax increment financing plan to capture local and state school taxes to reimburse Alpena Lodging and the city for eligible activity costs. The amount of reimbursement of eligible costs was capped at $1,359,120. And the eligible activities include a baseline environmental assessment, or BEA, do care activities, work plan redevelopment and review, site engineering and geotechnical investigation, special foundations, excavation of unwanted fill and backfilling, street improvements, onsite bike path, I got path in there twice, sorry about that, removal and replacement, a 15% contingencies, and then only if funding is available, administrative fees for the Brownfield Authority, funding for the local site remediation reviving fund, and then interest to be paid to the developer. Again, that's the final priority, all dependent upon whether those funds are available or not. Right now, we're anticipating that we'll only have enough funding to take care of the onsite and public activity, eligible activities. For the first 10 years of the TIF, only a minimal amount of local taxes, land and personal property will be captured. The vast majority of the local taxes will be abated under a PA 210 Commercial Rehabilitation Act exemption, which the council approved last month. The abatement will have an estimated cumulative value over its 10-year duration of $796,000. The PA 210 abatement will not directly impact the local taxing jurisdictions, including the city and county, since if they were not being abated, they would be captured either by the DDA, TIF, or the Brownfield TIF. Without the tax abatement, the Brownfield TIF would have been entitled to capture considerably more local taxes, a portion of which could have been placed in each of the authority's admin and site remediation revolving fund accounts. The AABR has agreed to only a provisional share of the local tax capture during the 15-year TIF, and this is outlined in the development agreement. By doing so, this provides the greatest amount of tax capture reimbursement to the private development to help ensure the financial viability of the project. At its meeting on Wednesday, November 12th, the City of Alpena Authority for Brownfield Redevelopment reviewed the Brownfield plan and 381 work plans for the Holiday Inn Express development project and unanimously adopted the attached resolution approving the plan and submitting it to council for consideration at tonight's public hearing. Also at that meeting, they did adopt or approve a development and reimbursement agreement, which outlines what the developer will be doing, how they get reimbursed through the TIF capture, and also the priority on those, some limitations that they have. And what you have is a revised version, because in discussions that I had with some of the outside business people here, private sector business people here in the community, and then also had discussions with Jerry Flannery of Alpena Lodging and Amerilodge, and also Matt McClellan, was to ensure that at least local contractors would have an opportunity for a fair and open, well, a fair and open opportunity to bid on the applicable work on this project. This can also be addressed by Jerry later, if you so desire. They have talked with some of the, some local contractors, and have gotten bids from them. At least from our perspective as staff, it isn't to say you will use local, but that they have that opportunity to fairly compete. So we added that clause in there. And that's what's different, that's number six on page five of the development agreement, where it states, "Alpena Lodging LLC agrees to actively solicit local contractors and provide a fair and open opportunity for local contractors to bid on applicable work for the Alpena Holiday Inn Express." So that was added. And it was supposed to have been in there. We had talked about it, we had all agreed, and then the mayor called, we were talking about it, and I said, "Well, yes, it's in here." And then I found out it wasn't. I couldn't find it. So we got a hold of Mac before he left to come over here, and we made sure the wording was included in the revised development agreement. As required by PA 381, we did notify all the affected taxing jurisdictions. They were notified by certified mail or hand-delivered. We also sent by email notification to both the DEQ and the MEDC. And finally, we did publish a legal notice in the paper on November 6th. Ultimately, the plan presents a, provides a balanced, a balanced combination of tax abatement and TIF incentives necessary for the project to move forward. If council concurs, staff recommends that the following, that following the public hearing, the attached resolution number 2014-15 and the development and reimbursement agreement be adopted. Staff will then work with the developer's consultant to complete the final documentation for transmission to the MEDC staff for the plan to be acted upon by the Michigan Strategic Fund Board, either at its December or January meeting in Lansing. The MSF approval is required whenever school taxes are captured as part of a TIF. As I said, we did notify all the taxing jurisdictions. To my knowledge, I don't think Karen, you heard anything back from any of them, nor did I. And it was, again, published in the paper. For that, we can, for our presentation.
Sure, thank you Greg, and I assume that during the open public comment, Matt's gonna come up and, or Jerry, and present the slides, I think that's what you have.
Yes.
So this is the presentation?
Right, this is the presentation.
Not public comment, right?
No.
Well, yeah, so this is part of your report?
Right, yeah. We have the petition, who's allowed, then we come up, and then anybody from the public.
Jerry Flannery, Comptonshire, Michigan, representing Alpena Lodging and Amerilodge Group. Before Mac gets started, I just wanted to sort of introduce us again and say thanks for the support Greg and his team on the Brownfield side of the DDA. You know, even council, when I was here a month ago, talking about the local tax abatement and making that request. We certainly appreciate that support. As Greg had mentioned, you know, it's for the levels of playing field for us, and these dollars are critical in bringing it back in line with what we're used to developing that, you know, on an everyday basis with the rest of our portfolio. We're very excited, because it brings us a site that has, as I mentioned last time, not a lot of attributes that we can really see. Being able to have a river site with a bike path and proximity to the lake, and then the number of downtown amenities that the site brings for us, it's a pretty exciting opportunity. So we certainly appreciate the support. And I'll let Mac sort of get into some of the more of the specifics, but I'll certainly leave that one to play. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mac McClellan with Otwell Mulvey, working with Amerilodge, Alpena Lodging, and the city. And Greg, there's still my thunder, I'm done. Pretty much kind of went over those issues, do you still like me to go through? I have a couple things there.
I'm sure I missed something.
Just, I want to provide a brief presentation tonight for the, for the project, the Alpena Holiday Inn Express project, this proposed, talk a little bit about Brownfield TIF, and how that works and how that operates specifically with this project as well, and talk about the process that we're in right now for the approvals and such. And also the request for approval in front of you this evening here. This is a pretty exciting opportunity, development of a 55,000 square foot, four-story Holiday Inn Express, right in the heart of downtown Alpena on the Thunder Bay River, the corner of River and Third Streets. I think everybody knows the site, is intimately familiar with it. It also includes modifications to Carter and Third Street as well, along in narrowing and providing some improvements along to Carter and Third Street there to provide ingress and egress to the site as well, and improvements to the general downtown area as well. Just a little bit, and Jerry can go on for a long time about Amerilodge Group and Lodging. It's a Michigan-based company, they have 15 projects, most of them are in Michigan. Interestingly, this is a pretty incredible honor, they were named the top developer nationwide for the Intercontinental Hotel Group, which is the Holiday Inn par company, Crown Plaza. And IHG is the largest developer of hotels in the nation. So you have the best developer representing and working with the largest hotel development group in the nation. And one that, back-to-back. Interestingly, developing a new prototype for the Holiday Inn Express, and this, this will be, Alpena will be, I said one of the first, but Alpena will actually be the first new prototype for the Holiday Inn Express location. They work strongly together with IHG and Amerilodge, designing this group in a collaborative fashion. So it's a very exciting opportunity that they're really interested in as well. Gives you a little bit of idea about the facade. Jerry was just talking about the facade may change a little bit, but it gives you kind of a scope and scale of what the site will be. Very nice amenities in the rooms, in the lobbies as well, and a really interesting and unique design that is cutting-edge for here. As Greg mentioned, there are extensive environmental issues on the site, site preparation and infrastructure expenses, and we're really looking towards that Brownfield tax improvement financing to help finance those extraordinary expenditures. Wouldn't have any of these, many of these expenditures, most all these expenditures, in a Greenfield site or in another site. So it really helps cover it and provide that opportunity. Little bit about Brownfield tax improvement financing, and it does level the playing field between Greenfield sites and Brownfield sites. Again, you don't have environmental issues, you don't have fill on sites, you can go ahead and start building right away. On Brownfield sites, you have many of these issues that are there. The great part is, we're not carving out a particular piece of the pie that you have existing right now, we're generating a new pie. The revenues come from the revenues generated by the project itself. And they're captured over time to reimburse those eligible activities, they're limited to eligible activities on eligible property. Other than that, I'll talk about that in a minute. And it's really tax revenue that wouldn't otherwise be generated. Without these incentives, Amerilodge and Alpena Lodging can't build this property here. Can't build this project. And as I mentioned, the revenue pie really expands because of that additional investment, and you're carving out a slice of that pie to help reimburse some of those costs. And here's kind of the pie. So for, so over a period of 30 years of analysis, now certainly taxes continue on past 30 years, be about an additional $5.6 million in taxes generated by the project, and about a quarter of that is being taken out to be able to reimburse those extraordinary costs. So you're getting three-quarters of that pie that you wouldn't normally have. As Greg mentioned, there's four ways to qualify a site for eligible property. Contaminated, blighted, functionally obsolete, or has historic designation. It also qualifies for adjacent property, not the case here. And this particular site is a Part 201 facility, contaminated site. It's kind of interestingly, there's a sandblown fire insurance map, it's always fascinating to take a look at, see what happened in the 1980s. The insurance companies went contracted with the sandblown company to go and look at all of the hazards that might be around on these sites, and so they're very interesting for folks like me that want to look at what hazardous materials are used on sites. But it was the Mason County Lumber Site in 1884, sorry, little biddies are flipped north and, or east and west, and up and down a little bit, converted to the Richardson Lumber Company in 1910, continued in 1924, and then in 1950, the sawmill was gone, and you might be able to read that, but it was a coal yard, coal storage yard. And that's really where most of the contamination comes from on that site. There's about a 12-inch layer of coal and slag residue that kind of carries throughout the site, varying levels of the site as well. It was also an auto body repair shop as well. We did, you know, Greg mentioned the earlier parts, the earlier work that was done on the EPA assessment grants, just a quick initial investigation, did a little more in-depth investigation, and found impact in all 12, 13, 12 of the, of the whorings that we took on the site. So it's fairly widespread contamination, again, about a one-foot layer throughout. So for Brownfield eligible activities, I mentioned the eligible activities, repayment is limited to only those items that are included in Act 31 for Brownfield eligible. It's not everything, not all the cost, it's only those extraordinary costs that are involved. Environmental activities, the investigation, baseline environmental assessment to provide new purchasers with exemptions from environmental liability. Even though you're not liable for that contamination, you still have to take measures to protect people, protect exposure, prevent exposure, and prevent worsening of that contamination. You just can't pick it up and put it someplace else, and you also have to make sure that people are not exposed to that contamination. And then some additional response activities, any other remediation. So the other part of that are developmental, what I call developmental activities, or non-environmental activities. Across the state, leaden asbestos abatement, demolition, and relocation of public buildings for economic development purposes, that lab site's not used very much. And then for core communities or qualified local units of government, like the city of Alpena, you have additional incentives, and that is site preparation and infrastructure. So those are two pretty important pieces for about you and about 120 of your compadres around the state. A limited number of folks have that kind of capability, and as you'll see, it's a pretty important aspect to the project. For the Holiday Inn Express, be doing the environmental investigation, the BEA and do care activities, have to manage that soil. If it has to come off, it has to be taken to a landfill, there's costs associated with that, those are included, incorporated, or create some barriers so the people are not exposed to any of the contamination that's left on the site. And also the developmental activities that are involved are site preparation and infrastructure, and I'll detail those in just a moment. Kind of the key considerations, as Greg mentioned, the PA 210 tax abatement for 10 years, it is actually $795, that's a little old number from those calculations, based, that is the local contribution to the project. And so the state looks at providing a relative share of its contribution, the state taxes, I think, are about 52%, and the local taxes are about 48, excuse me, otherwise, 48% for state and 52% for local. But because of that local contribution that's being made, that $700,000 over time, the state is gonna end up reimbursing about 60% of all these Brownfield costs. So in essence, Greg mentioned that 1.3 number or so, you're really getting a state grant over time to help pay those costs. Pretty great opportunity to help garner some state dollars. And, and as Greg mentioned, the estimated revenue is based on what we believe the assessed value of the hotel to be and the extraordinary cost here. It doesn't appear that there's gonna be enough revenues to reimburse those eligible costs, but it may be that those, that value grows and rises, or the eligible costs are actually a little bit lower once the construction is completed. And there may be some additional revenues that are left over, and as Greg mentioned, there's provision for administrative costs and the local site remediation fund in that, and then if there's anything left over after that, then there's an opportunity for interest capture, but in no case will the capture go past the 15-year period. The, the costs are, again, split between the environmental and the non-environmental. The total cost for the environmental is approximately, with contingencies, is approximately $74,000. There's some dollars in there for interest, again. What we did is make the worst-case scenario, that way we can get state approval for the worst-case scenario, and then again, it will be whatever the actual revenues are and whatever the actual expenditures are, that will be included. The site preparation, as Greg mentioned, there's site engineering and geotechnical investigation, the largest component are the special foundations, that you've probably had a chance to watch, or hear, going in now, and there's also quite a bit of unstable fill along with that coal, there's a whole lot of wood slag from the sawmill operations that are across the site as well. The street improvements, the $70,000 estimated cost for the street improvements that the city will be spending are also reimbursable, and those will actually be the first items to be reimbursed as part of the tax capture, and then the replacement of the bike path if it is damaged in that, in the construction area, and then redone. And I think, again, just to solve one problem, is that after it's constructed, after it's built, there'll be an as-built easement that will be provided, because there were some questions about whether it is or is not in the existing.
It is not entirely within the existing. Easement was created first. It was very angular, and the bike path is not. And so it doesn't fall necessarily within the existing easement entirely.
So that'll be corrected?
Yeah. So if it's done, then we'll do a new one.
So the, the site currently generates about $4,000 in taxes a year, and so if there's no improvement on that site, this is kind of what it looks like over that time. For the first 10 years, again, there'll be an exemption, but the state taxes will be captured on that, and will rise to just about $100,000 over that time period. And then the last five years, half of those taxes are gonna be going to the DDA, and then half of the taxes will go towards paying eligible activities. So we'll be able to combine half of those local taxes plus 100% of the state taxes, again, for that 15-year period. And then after that time period, all the taxes go to the taxing jurisdictions. In this case, we'll go to the DDA and the states until the DDA TIF capture is completed. So a significant difference from the no-improvement graph to this graph in terms of availability. Just quickly on the Brownfield approval process, we're in the process right now for approving the Brownfield plan as well, including the development and reimbursement agreement. It was reviewed and approved by the Alpena Authority for Brownfield Redevelopment. We're at the public hearing tonight, and it was noticed, as well, the taxing jurisdictions and within the paper, reviewed and hopefully approved by the city council this evening. There also, in order to get state tax capture, there's an Act 31 work plan, which provides a little bit more detail about all the eligible activities. That was reviewed and approved at the, at the November Brownfield Authority meeting as well. And importantly, it can't benefit a liable party, in this case, the Alpena Lodging Group is not a liable party, those, the BEA has taken care of that. And reviewed and approved by the Alpena Authority, it's submitted to both DEQ on the environmental side, and the Michigan Strategic Fund for the non-environmental activities as well. They have about 60 days to approve them, I'm guessing it'll be the January meeting for that. DEQ issues an administrative approval, but the state has a, has a board that approves those officially. Then the eligible activities are conducted, you've seen they're already, they've already started, but will be conducted over the next, about the next six months, in terms of site development activities and in the environmental issues. There will be, and I think you're gonna be starting the infrastructure pieces in spring, kind of depending on the construction of the project and what makes sense. Bike path will obviously be the last item to be done as well. All the invoices, the actual cost, actual invoices are submitted to the authority, they're reviewed and approved. The budgets, what we have now are budgets, but they'll be based on actual cost and actual invoices for payments. The development occurs, and then over time, those taxes are captured, and then annually, essentially, the developers reimbursed up to the point that they have met their eligible activity obligations, they're all paid off, for the 15 years, whichever it was. So the request before you tonight is to consider approval of the resolution that approves the Brownfield plan, and also to authorize the chair to sign the development and reimbursement agreement. Thank you, I'm happy to answer any questions as they come.
Do we have any questions for Jerry and Mac?
We should do.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. They've got a lot of public going on here this evening. Any open public comment? Any written, any written correspondence or comments?
No.
Okay, we'll close the public comment with the city council discussion. Now, does anyone have any questions? From actor Jerry, Greg is here, Adam is also here, if he has any questions. We've kind of gone over some of this. I was, I'm on both boards, so I got the presentation twice, so.
Quick, quick question for Jerry, maybe. On the local contractors?
Yes.
Section where it talks about, provide a fair and open opportunity for local contractors. I guess, how do you define that, or how do you see a fair and open opportunity?
I think we've already started working on that. I was trying to get through to my construction guys tonight, just to give me specific names, but I hope, I believe we've spoken with Elmers on the excavation side. You know, so for us, I mean, we have to, we generally have scale, because we've been building hotels at a fair pace over the last few years, so we have contractors that we get discounts from to move from job to job. But, you know, we are traditionally, you know, sort of in the lower part of Michigan, and so. and so we don't necessarily have that here, where some, you know, the number becomes a bit higher to work with, so we started to seek out, you know, we spoke with some folks at the beer, just, you know, to kind of say, hey, we need something, can we come to you? And they certainly have been welcoming, and said, yeah, whatever you need, might be able to find trades and things like that. I know, like I said, on the excavation side, we've spoken with them. There have been two plumber contractors that we've reached out to, I don't have the names, unfortunately, I can get those, you know, to Greg, but I think from our perspective, we do want to partner with folks, especially locally here, there might be some economies for us that way. And so really, you know, just trying to reach out to, you know, local folks, if yours an example, and certainly, you know, I mentioned to Greg in an email, you know, the two plumbers that we've spoke with, for time reasons, you know, aren't working out, and so we just said, hey, if you have somebody, you know somebody, you know, let us know, you know, because we are new, but, yeah, just, you know, working through people that we know, help from the city, yeah, we want to talk to those folks, and, you know, see if they can, you know, be part of this. So that's how we've been doing it, so.
I think you said also that you had spoken with one, an electrical contractor as well.
Right.
Local one.
Right.
And getting a price from them, so.
Right, they were actually, that's true, they, you know, the name escapes me, Greg, and I apologize, but I know, I think they came down to see us in Rochester, and, you know, we're trying to get a feel for what we need, and come up with a quote, and I know they were working on that, so, you know, I can get Greg some more, you know, definitive information, but, yeah, that's sort of how it's been operating thus far.
See, you know, fair and open opportunity is more of an effort, right, where you at least make the effort to do it.
Sure. Yeah, we want them to know that it's there, and we want to hear from them, and, you know, ultimately, we have to make the best business decision we can.
True.
You know, because we want to keep doing this, but, you know, yeah, that's how it's
Like I said, I've been kind of over this quite a bit, I know we've talked about the hotel at different meetings from time to time, so I certainly don't have a whole lot of other input now.
The only other thing I would add is, the first capture, well, once the, if this is approved tonight, that will set the base, which I believe Jeff said was 140-some-thousand, based on a $280,000 value, which was basically the land. That will set the base, then the incremental increases, anything above that, which is basically the entire project. And then they will, as they do the work, the first actual money that will come in will not be until, actually, starting in the summer of next year, there, once they have set that figure, no, I take it back, will not be until 2016, will we get our first actual monies into the brownfield, and then we can begin that reimbursement process. Because then they'll set the new taxable value at the end of next year, which will be pretty much a completed, probably, we would hope, a completed project by then. And so then it will be that value with slight modifications, you know, throughout the balance of the TIF. It is unusual for us to go 15 years, we've always limited ours in the city to 10, but because of the nature of the site conditions and the cost, and one thing about the foundations, what we pay for is not just the entire foundation, what they do is, they will have to provide us what the cost would be for a foundation, like on a greenfield site, their normal foundation they put in. Then what is the cost for the extra deep, because they're putting pilings down, what is it, 26 to 32 feet, I believe, down to hit bedrock? What the difference in those, that's what's eligible for reimbursement. So it's not the full cost, you have to take out what would be your normal foundation cost from that. So they have to provide that documentation, it'll be reviewed, and then we have to approve it, and then the monies will be paid out as we get them. As we get those monies generally from the county, they'll send it to us, we deposit it in our account, and then we reimburse.
Greg, I understand it right, that the DDA would start to be reimbursed ahead of the city, right?
Well, no, the city will get its, well, we've estimated about $68,000, we just rounded it to 70, and there is a contingency in there, 15%, so it could, it could be another 15% if the cost were up there. That is actually going to be the first thing reimbursed, even before they start getting reimbursed, which will, should get entirely paid in the first year, will get fully reimbursed for the cost of the street changes. The DDA basically has looked at this when, you know, as we discussed it at the board, they see it as an investment, and their contribution to the project, because that's what they're there to do, is to help, to promote, and where they can, they actually provide seed funds or whatever. They don't have the cash, how they're doing it is by giving up their DDA TIF tax capture to the brownfield. And that'll be done, well, they're giving it up in two ways, one is through the tax abatement, because that captures all local tax, which is what they capture, they capture all local taxes except the ESD. For whatever reason, under state law, DDAs cannot capture ESD. So the brownfield will capture that, as well as personal property and the school taxes. Then, after 10 years, when the abatement's over, the DDA will then begin to capture 50% of what it normally would, for five years. And the ESD will also get 50% of what it normally would get, because that is not captured, and then at the end of the 15 years, everybody, the DDA will get its full amount through its TIF, and ESD will get its full amount. The schools are always covered whole by the state, both the state education tax and the local school tax, so they are, they are not harmed in any way, they're fully reimbursed right from the beginning.
Thank you.
I move we approve, are you ready for, I move we approve resolution, re- resolution?
It's easy for you to say.
2014 to 15, approve the Holiday and Express brownfield plan.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And then, as for the approval of the development and reimbursement agreement.
I move we approve the development and reimbursement plan as well.
Sexton?
Yeah.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Next up is Treasury's report, financial report, July 1, 2014 through October 31,
As of October 31st, we should be at about 33% of our revenue and expenses. Our revenue's at 49.58, which is, versus last year, which was 57.57%, and the big difference was just when the grant money was received, it's not that we got a whole bunch more money. As far as expenses.
Didn't figure.
I'd be a little more excited. Expenses are at 27.54, which is good, we're below where we should be. Last year was 33.05% at this time, and that was mainly because of the Beach Hotel that we purchased, and the DPW had a capital, some capital projects that were done through October, more so last year than this year, so we're doing well. And just, I don't normally report on water and sewer, but we've gone through a lot of changes, so I wanted to let you know, on the water revenue, water fund revenue, we're at 37.3%, last year was 28.93, so that's basically with rate changes, that's helped in that area. Expenses are 32.51%, last year was 27.62, so our expenses are up over last year. However, a lot of that is in the distribution department in the water fund, and the bond payments went up 25,000, so that was the main reason on that. There is an ebb to the bond payments, where they're start out low, get a little higher for a while, and then at the end, they'll come down. The sewer fund revenue is at 38.44, versus last year of 29.81%, again, it's from the sales and services. And then the expenses are at 29.99, last year they were at 27.03, so we're just up slightly, and that was across all the departments, it wasn't any one big event that happened, so. So we're plugging along in there pretty good. And then one thing I had brought up to council, because the monthly reports don't show a lot of change, our revenue and our expenses are fairly steady with what we budget, if I could go to a quarterly report, and for several reasons, it would, you know, allow our staff to spend time doing other things, just the time putting it together and printing it and distributing it. It's not a huge amount of time, but it still saves a little bit of time. And then the other thing is, just as I had said, it might be a little more meaningful if I reported quarterly rather than every month, when things don't change significantly. And however, there, if there was an emergency, or, you know, we had some capital that we had to do right away, we, obviously, we do bring those type of things to you and to your attention immediately. But otherwise, every council, you get your warrant, shows the money that we're spending. This time was almost 700 or 800,000, I believe, maybe more, okay. And that was, as you saw, the retirement system, we paid that, and so there were some, you're going to see those expenses still. Our department heads monitor their budgets, they can go online in our BSNA system, which is our software financial system, they can report, do a report every day if they want to, to know where they're at. And I believe our deputy has given some, set up some other reports for them also. So I would like to also request if council would consider letting me do a quarterly, even on a trial basis, and see if it's something you want to go back to monthly, or the quarterly is good.
Karen, didn't you, wasn't it quarterly in the past? Or you've always been?
I think I've always done it monthly, yeah. It may have been, and I think for the longest time, when I first got here, we weren't doing the reports, but then we just started doing them, and basically, they're receive and file, there's not too much to report, but if I did a quarterly, at least I could show you a little bit more difference in the, in the numbers.
Would that cut out the lag time between what the bank reports and your report?
A little.
Stop it.
There'll always be that timing issue where a, you know, a capital project gets done and it doesn't show until a month later, or we do the expenses, but we haven't gotten reimbursed, so the revenue's not showing, so there's always going to be some lag. But, yeah, at least it would, it might get more expenses where they should be in a quarter, like if you have your summer quarter, you're going to see all your labor costs, like I always say, for summer help, you're going to see that, where it should be the taxes, you'll see the majority in that quarter, so you'll kind of get more of a feel for when the expenses and the revenue was coming in, and what's happening with that.
I would like it better. I'd like a quarterly report better.
Why don't we put it on, there was a suggestion, I think, earlier from Sean as well, just put it on the agenda for.
Okay.
First week of what's coming up, December.
December, okay, I'll do that.
It's a little month thing going on. It's so cold out, you're taking a start.
Okay, so I just need a receive and file on the.
On the report itself. So.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
You are watching All About Alpina.